All right. The Benton County County Commissioners now assess the board of plan.
Thank you, sir. All the way to order. From the president.
Pray with me?
Yes.
All right, I was President and Father, we come to you tonight during the county's business, Lord. Lord, we ask that you be with our county, we ask that you be with our citizens, we ask that you be with our leaders in higher government, Lord. Lord, please bless the sick and inflicted that we deal with daily, these things are in your son's precious name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Daryl Hicks?
Here.
Ronnie Hopper?
Here.
Mary Powers here. Angie Kern. Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Here.
Kenneth Miller?
Here.
Rocky Preston?
Don Boe.
Leah Die?
Here.
Norman Fraser?
Here.
Barry Fur?
Here.
Sunny Hall?
Here.
Phil Melton?
Here.
Doug Bickers? Cheryl Hill?
Here.
Janet Higgin?
Here.
Roseanne Ward?
Here.
Ward Clannan?
Here.
I have a form. Lead criminal agenda.
Motion.
Motion by the state.
Thank you.
Second of the county. Any discussion? Not only thank you, I have my own. Put this as a citizen forum. I have Mr. Mark Florence.
First of all, I want to thank everybody who's coming out last Tuesday night, that was the largest crowd that we've had at our meeting, so hopefully we will grow that. I think we had twelve commissioners and seven school board members, so thank y'all for coming, and I wish everyone a Merry Christmas. I just want to take a couple of minutes to address paid articles submitted to the Chronicle this week from Commissioner Preston. To my knowledge, I have never failed to address any concerned question or anyone from anyone from this commission regarding our schools or school budget. If I have, then you didn't call me and ask. Concerning the schools' fund balance, we currently have approximately four point eight million in fund balance. I've never, I've told the budget committee that every time during our budget hearing, there was mention of the financial advisor hired by this commission, not by the school board. Also, the figure that was in that article, approximately seven point three million, included is not the fund balance, that's the total cash available. This includes unpaid bills, advanced BEP funds, which is your basic education funds, which pays our salaries in all our schools. I think it's almost over thirteen million that we received from the state, and also the payroll that went out today, which is over a million dollars. I personally called the trustee's office, and they confirmed that no one told Commissioner Preston that this was the fund balance. And I also know that there was a commissioner that received a letter from CTAAS this week that said that CTAAS did not do our budget, our fund balance was overfunded. Just a few things for fund balance that we've spent over the last twenty years, and we have not asked a commission for any tax increases in twenty years, which is unheard of. We've used anywhere from a hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand dollars to budget out of our fund balance. We've spent over a million dollars in HVACs over the last ten years out of fund balance, not having asked a commission. And we've replaced chillers, we've purchased over four hundred thousand dollars worth of school buses. We currently fund five school nurses for our schools, and the BEP only funds one. We're providing one and a half SROs, and we've added new leaders at the high school, we've added a technology position, sixty thousand, and we've made numerous improvements throughout our school system without increasing any tax dollars. So, I thought you needed to know that. I'm not sure why Commissioner Preston made this a personal attack on the school board, my family, and me, but I learned a long time ago to not make work or work-related decisions personal, and I'm sure in the start. When the property arrived with Adam Lee was purchased in two thousand and seven by the Board of Education, I was not the director and was not appointed until July of two thousand and thirteen. Personally, I think it was one of the best investments that our school board and Mr. Randall Robertson ever made. I commend him on their foresight. That property is probably worth three times what it would give for back in two thousand and seven. In closing, I hope in the future that any elected official would address concerns or questions in a professional way instead of through a paid article to our local paper. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Anyone else speak on the citizen forum? Not that loses interest. Commissioner for?
Yes, Chairman. I'm going to respond to the director's words. First of all, nobody's responsible for that letter but me. Not the mayor, not the chairman, I didn't ask for permission to write this letter all by myself, nobody else is responsible. I don't have, I don't have an axe to grind with anybody. I put a lot of thought into this letter, a lot of research, I challenge anybody in this room to do the research that I did. Even when the letter was finished, I wasn't sure that I wanted to print the letter. I knew that the, I knew I have a small business at risk. I knew that by me writing this letter, I have a daughter that's got one more semester in school. After that, she wants to be a teacher. I hope that this letter I wrote today doesn't make difficult her having an opportunity to teach in this family today. That being said, I studied and I thought about it a year. And for those of you that don't know what the director's comment, there's a letter on page eleven in A section that came in from. I encourage everybody to read it. And I'm certainly here to answer any questions about it at a later day, and I done it only for the reason I thought it needed to be done. I think there's information in there that the citizens need to know about. I'm gonna stop here, I'm gonna say. I'll remind everybody one more time, I don't have an axe to grind with anybody.
Thank you, Locky. Any further? Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to bring up something for discussion. When the mayor cast his resolution, there were cries that we were trying to sneak something through. So, I'm gonna bring up something so that in that republic, everyone's had time to think about it, there's no surprises. We have the budget coming up pretty here, and it's probably gonna be a difficult, long process. Our county does not have a funding mechanism in place to, on a regular or even semi-regular basis, rotate out patrol vehicles for the sheriff's department. A lot of counties have a funding mechanism, yes, we don't. I think everyone on the budget committee looked really hard trying to see how do we pay for this? We don't want to raise some property taxes, and we don't want a wheel tax. But at some point, this county is gonna have to address the fact that patrol cars need to be purchased, used, rotated out, purchased, used, rotated out, and there has to be funds to do that. So, before we raise the ugly words of wheel tax or property tax increase, I invite all of our commissioners, let's look at this budget, let's see, are the funds there? Are they available, or do we need to consider some mechanism in order to take care of that issue so it's not a yearly crisis? So, that's just food for thought.
Thank you. Anything further? Press your phone. Is not, goes to line item eight, criminal agenda. Motion by the state. Second of the county. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, here. Line item nine, remove the public utilities, report the public utilities. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by the state. Second of the county. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, here. Line item ten, resolution declaring Pires items in the basement of the jail and serve for us property.
Motion?
Motion by?
Captain. Fraser.
Fraser, second by?
Patton.
Detective Patton. Any discussion?
Recommended by property.
Recommended by, yes, the county.
Recommended by law enforcement and by budget.
Law and budget. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, here. No. Line item eleven, resolution for many of the Benton County fair ordinance. Read that to you. Resolution two oh one nine, two one two one six dash oh two, sponsored by the county commissioner Rocky Preston, board plant, Mayor Pires, Dunn Victor, Norman Fraser, Ethan Die, Sunny Hall, Ronnie Hopper. Where is the Benton County Commission passed a resolution on June seventeen nineteen eighty-five regarding the insurance of beer permit for the sale of beer in Benton County, Tennessee? Whereas the resolution passed on June seventeen nineteen eighty-five for busy sale of beer within three hundred feet of a residential dwelling. Measure from building to building provides that the owner of the resident dwelling appears in person before the county beer board and object to the insurance of such permit or license prior to its issuance pursuant to Tennessee Code and Act of 1957, dash five, dash one oh five. Where it is a recommendation of Mr. Preston, Plant, Pires, Victor, Fraser, Die, Hall, and Mr. Hopper from legislative body to amend the previous resolution dated June seventeen nineteen eighty-five and change the beer ordinance from within three hundred feet to the three hundred feet, no change of a residential dwelling pursuant to Tennessee Code and Act of. For the board, whereas the Benton County Commission passed the resolution September sixteen nineteen ninety-one regarding the insurance of beer permit for the sale of beer in Benton County, Tennessee. And whereas the resolution passed on September sixteen nineteen ninety-one for busy sale of beer within two thousand feet of a school, church, or other place of public gathering pursuant to Tennessee Code and Act of. And whereas it is recommended by the Benton County Mayor Brent Lashley to amend the previous resolution dated September sixteen nineteen ninety-one and charge the beer ordinance, change the beer ordinance from within two thousand feet to five hundred feet of a school, church, or other place of public gathering pursuant to Tennessee Code and Act of section fifty-seven, dash five, one oh five, and for this resolution to take effective as of January one of twenty twenty.
Motion?
I have a motion from Mr. Patton.
Aye.
Second of Fraser. Discussion? If no discussion, I'll have a roll call vote.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Leah Die?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Barry Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Clannan?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion here. Line item twelve, a resolution changing the position of the county's mayor executive assistant to budget administrator. I read that, resolution twenty nineteen twelve sixteen dash oh three, sponsored by the Benton County Mayor Brent Lashley, legislative reference, budget committee. Whereas the sole responsibility of the county mayor's office for proper accounting and budgeting of the county funds under this jurisdiction, and whereas this task traditionally have been those of executive assistants, assistants at a level paid well below the responsibility. Whereas the mayor currently executive assistant goes through and beyond in her fiscal responsibility and continuous education for the betterment of the Benton County. And whereas she carries many different titles on behalf of Benton County where we would otherwise need it to create and fill additional position to help maintain these job duties and responsibilities. Whereas the mayor currently executive assistant holds a BS in business administration and has completed the Tennessee Basic Economic Development course. She has also completed multiple courses offered by CTAAS on budgeting and accounting procedures for both county and municipal power, and plans to enroll in the upcoming CCLO Certified County Financing Officer program in twenty twenty. Whereas in accorded to twenty, to the U.S. Department Labor Bureau, the average salary for position of the mayor executive assistant is listed as follows. I'm just gonna say from anywhere from thirty-five thousand to eighty-nine thousand, that's what they suggested, their salary would be. Therefore, with the knowledge through the ever increasing responsibility placed on this position in the mayor's office, the county mayor would like to request that the pay be increased to match the tasks being performed by the position of a new salary being of forty-two thousand five hundred dollars annually. And whereas this increase in pay should also come with a change entitled to include both executive assistant and budget administrator. And it will be necessary to appropriate fund in the total amount of six thousand seventy-one dollars ninety-nine cents from the payroll unsigned fund balance within the county general fund and budget to the appropriate payroll. Expenditure account listed below for the increase to take effect January one twenty and the cover to the remainder of the fiscal year. Decreased revenue, six thousand seventy-one ninety-nine, increased expenditures in the social security, retirement, unemployment, Medicare, and executive budget administration. Now therefore be resolved by the board commissioner of Benton County, Tennessee, assembled in regular section this sixteenth date of December twenty nineteen. I'm gonna change it to the nineteenth, not the sixteenth, due to our missing our meeting. That the county mayor's executive assistant received both the position title change to the budget administrator and salary increase up to forty-two thousand five hundred annually. And that the necessary funds in the amount of six thousand seventy-one dollars ninety-nine cents be appropriated from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order for this position change to take effect. Motion? Mr. Daniel Ferguson? Second of Mr. Pat, second of Mr. Patton. Any discussion? Yes, on chairman.
I'd like to vote for this. But before we vote on this, almost every year, at least one commissioner has asked to restore the longevity payments taken away from county employees, and every year we hear, we don't have the money, we can't do it. There's at least one other employee in the courthouse who has a degree. Is that employee going to get a significant raise based on their education? I'm gonna vote yes, but this is the foot in the door for us to finally start paying the people who serve this county day in and day out. I'm not talking about the sheriff's department or the jail, I'm talking about your clerks, your secretaries, your bookkeepers, your librarians, all the people who serve the people, get very little except a pat on the back. So, I'm gonna vote yes for this, but come in this budget process, let's please look at these folks who have labored some of them thirty-some years for us and barely a raise, barely a cost of living, and we took away what little bit of extra they were getting. It's time to fix it, put it back, and start paying these people competitively so that we can better serve the citizens. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes?
One question, should we make an amendment to change the sixteenth to the nineteenth?
Yes.
I think we should do that on all, all along that state, December sixteenth.
Can we make one motion to change all of it?
I think it's better to do that.
I make a motion to change all of them.
Got a motion on the floor.
Oh, we gotta, no, we gotta wait till we finish this. No, we've got to make a motion to change this one. I make a motion to change this one right now.
I'll second it, okay.
For this one.
Motion, can I say? To amend the sixteenth. Motion, Mark?
Yeah.
Motion on amendment now.
Yes, to amend it to the sixteenth. Nineteen. Nineteen.
Voice vote?
Voice vote.
Voice vote on this? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I have my own nose. That will be the one that's sitting, right?
After we finish this one, then I'll make that.
Any discussion?
How long has Ashley been there? At least years, like thirty-one. Twelve years, you're all? Yeah, okay. Seven. She was born in thirteen, two thousand and thirteen. Okay. I talked to Pat Mullensworth today over at Henry County, she does the whole entire budget for each and every department, every single thing. She's been there for eighteen years, and she makes fifty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars. She also has a BS in business administration. In two thousand and one, when she took over, she was making as many as twenty-nine thousand dollars. I just think this is a big hunk of money for someone who's only been here since two thousand and thirteen, considering we had employees that have been here for twenty-five plus years and barely made it thirty. That's just my food for thought for you.
Thank you, Katie. You frozen in?
Commissioner Ward, the district, I've got a lot to say, I'm sorry. I'm not Negative Nancy, I promise you, and I'm not against anybody giving a raise and making their life better, but we've gotta stop and consider. First of all, are all the commissioners aware that this resolution, we're appropriating six thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, six thousand seventy-one dollars and ninety-nine cents? That's just to cover from now until June third. July one, she's gonna get another raise of that same amount, which totals her raise as ten thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, which comes to a total when you add social security and all her benefits to it, that comes up to a total of over twelve thousand dollars that we're gonna allocate between now and July one. Okay? Like I said, I have nothing personal against Ashley, this has nothing to do with who this raise is for, I promise you. I know she has big responsibilities in the office, but you gotta look around some of these other offices too. There are employees in those offices that have big responsibilities. I know because I've been there, I've been in two different offices up here, I've been around the other offices. Okay, it says that she's gonna be the budget administrator, okay? Explain the meantime, if she's got a degree in business administration, how can she be a budget administrator? Should this not be someone with some kind of financial background, some kind of financial education? Yeah, I think we need to think about that. And it's like Kalia said, we've got employees here, and I'm not gonna call their names, but I've got them written down. We have one that's thirty-eight years, we have one that's thirty-four years, thirty years, another one that's thirty-four, and another one that's twenty-four. We have some school employees that are out there right now in the central office who have been there over forty years, and they only make thirty-seven thousand dollars. The other one that's been there thirty-three years only makes around thirty-three thousand dollars. And that's a big department, we're talking about the school that they're owed, that's three hundred and something employees that we need to think about. I think that sometimes experience, all these girls that's got all this experience in these offices, sometimes the experience is just as good as education. Sometimes in some places, if not better. You take somebody that's been in an office for thirty-eight years, you know, you bring somebody in with a college education, okay? It takes them a long time to learn that all, it takes a long time to get that knowledge. Over the years, I know the departments, some of our department heads have asked for a raise for their employees, and they've been shut down on it. They don't wanna hear it, they don't have the money. And also, a few years ago, we had a committee that we set up a pay scale for all the employees here. A lot of those got some nice raises according to their years of service. And we put that in a policy handbook, I think, and we voted on that, and that was approved. So, the way I look at that is kinda like we're opening the door here, because what's good for one is good for another. So, if another department head decides that, hey, I've got an employee that's been here thirty years, and they do the accounting, and they do the four or five different duties that they've done, that they're responsible of, why not give them a new title, give them a raise? If it's fair for one, it's fair for the other. I just want us to look at this, I'm not saying that Ashley doesn't deserve better pay, but if it's good for one, it's gonna be good for another. What's fair is fair, and what's right is right, and I think we need to consider.
Anyone have anything further?
I got a question.
Yes, Mr.?
Has come, where does it say that she gets another six thousand dollar raise in first?
To raise her salary from what it is now to forty-two thousand dollars, she's gonna have, we're gonna put twelve thousand dollars in the budget to give her up to forty-two thousand.
Next year.
Next year. So, we're programing six now, and then we will program-
Cause it's half a year.
Yeah, it's half a year, see? So, July one, gonna have to put another six thousand in there to bump her up to forty-two.
That's why I'm not on the budget committee.
May I just say something?
And I knew this was gonna come up, and I wanna clarify, because I think anyone who has attended budget committee meetings has heard me advocate that we are now in a position in our county where we're going to become, or we're gonna begin facing challenges when it comes to salaries that we haven't faced before. It's been kinda been a buyer's market in Benton County over part of the past decade, meaning the economy has been down to the point where people needed the job here with county government. But right now, we live in a very competitive economic environment. And there are multiple types of raises, one of them being step raises, people who progress in their job over time, they learn more, they gain experience, maybe they get some certifications. There's longevity raises, which are both based on time as well as cost of living adjustments, and then there's something called competitive raises. And I think anyone here who has ever dealt with Ashley, I, I would say every commissioner and on this floor has gone in and sat down with Ashley and gone over the budgets and gone over the numbers. She's probably the one main critical peg or spoke in the wheel that runs our financial machine here, all right? And, and every year, we talk about the budget. The budget is really the most critical part of operating a government over the course of a year. And since Ashley has been, I guess you'd say, neck deep into that process, she serves also on aiding the budget committee, our audit findings have continually gone down, and I believe our probability projections are getting better and better. I think our budget is managed very efficiently. The county mayor is the chief financial officer for the county, I can approve and authorize, but I cannot manage the budget. I shouldn't be managing the budget, I should be overseeing the budget. And I don't have access to financial systems, but I do have the financial training to do her particular job. But part of the control elements here is I'm not supposed to have my hand in the table. I sign off on things, so I cannot get in there and manage the budget myself, and I don't believe a county mayor should be hands-on managing the budget on a day-to-day operation. Ashley does, and I think she's done it extremely well, but I mentioned competitive rates. The question should be, can we operate as efficiently and effectively without Ashley? Because I have approved her, I have over several interviews, where companies and also other counties are calling her to come to work there, okay? And they were talking about close fifty thousand dollars in that range. We're getting her for forty-two five, I believe it's an excellent, I guess, value for our dollar. I believe she's worthy of that. I believe, like I said, any of you who have worked with her one-on-one knows how well she manages the budget and how a critical component to our county government. So, so I don't, I can't speak for the other department heads as to whether someone's calling their departments, trying to hire their employees away. So, so I don't, I can't speak for the other department heads as to whether someone's calling their departments trying to hire their employees away. I think that's the first sign that you have definitely got someone who's got a good reputation in the field that they do, but also how critical they may be. I know the sheriff already gets this a lot, people trying to hire deputies away. Uh, we have gone in the last year talking about how competitive the law enforcement field is, and can he keep his deputies? You know? And, and now county government is gonna be faced with this, because all it takes is one really good employer to move into this community and begin paying higher salaries before a lot of these county employees now have an option. And they haven't had an option. I could tell you, Ms. Travis has had multiple options, and we've been just thankful that they've just been out of range of driving distance that she has foregone those particular jobs and decided to stay here. But there's also a local entity trying to, uh, I guess you'd say, secure her services right now, and I believe she's worthy of a raise. She's a critical element of our financial system in this county. I think she's proven herself, and I think sometimes you just have to pay for the talent. And she's, she's got the talent to run that job, and if all else fails, she's the part that kinda keeps the ship very steady. So that's why I recommended her getting the raise that she did. It's not so much just to reward her, but it's also to keep her, uh, working for the...
Can I say something?
Yes.
I too feel like I have employees who are well worth the pay too, and I know what he's saying. And I've had girls who've had opportunities to go other places too. But when you get people in there that you can trust and they can do the job, like my girls, I don't feel like I could ask for any better people who is there when you can't be and somebody that you can trust. Um, they may not have a bachelor's degree, but to me, they have every degree that's ever needed for a raise as well. Um, these places in Ashley, she does have a lot, and I feel like she does a lot. But I have one girl who does three jobs for one, and I have, like Melissa, she does driver's license and waits on other people as well. I'm not saying Ashley don't have a hard job, I know that. But every one of y'all's come into office and talked about how backed up our office is and that we're always busy. So for me saying that, I have asked for raises for them. Donna has been here over thirty, no, she's gonna be here twenty-five years. Lisa, uh, back there in the back desk, has a bachelor's degree too. Um, me for one, being the county clerk, I don't have any college degree. I believe what you learn as you go, as Roseanne said, and Roseanne is right, the more you know about the office and in there, the better you are. And I agree with her with that, and I thank her for that, because I feel that once you're in there and get to know it, whether you have the bachelor's degree or not, even though Ashley does have it, and I'm not degrading her, cause I feel like she, she does a whole lot, but I feel like my girls does a lot as well. And I feel they deserve a raise too, and I've asked several times. And I feel that, uh, other offices feel the same as me. I feel like we've been put down every time we've asked for a raise, we can't do it. When they were first hired, they were, their insurance was paid for, and that's what they signed for, and that was taken away with no more pay. And I feel like if we're gonna look at one, we need to start looking at all of them. And they've been offered in Humphreys County as well, making more than what they do here, and I've been blessed that they've stayed with me. And I just wish everyone would think about that. If nothing gets Ashley, I want her to get her money, but I think if, like Roseanne said, you do it for one, you're gonna do it for all of them. And we're sale. Thank you.
And I would say that I, the department head, the mayor's office, uh, I came in the budget committee, I did exactly what I was supposed to do. Propose to the budget committee, make the case to the budget committee, show the value, and so I would encourage department heads such as Wanda and the other elected officials. If they've got these employees that are critical elements and components of operations, make your case. You know what I mean? And, and that's what we do, you know? But as a whole, as a whole, county employees, uh, are, are very, very, uh, low, low wage, uh, on the scale of wages, are very low. And, uh, I just believe that the time's coming that we have to, uh, look ourselves in the eye and really, like, uh, Commissioner, you know, he'll say that this is the start of probably the discussion of how are we gonna begin positioning our future wage scales? And that's why we talked about getting the H R consultant in here, begin getting manuals, policies, uh, structuring our personnel policy and wage policies more effectively. Cause we have to be prepared for the, the future wage earners down the road. Chair?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to a different place. Uh, and not take away from anybody, but when we got, we got excellent ladies everywhere in this county. Uh, but the hidden factor, one of the hidden factors that's been brought up a couple times is our healthcare. Okay? Our healthcare for our employees last three years went up thirty-five percent. Okay? So for a county job, some people get in those positions for the security of the healthcare. Unfortunately, they have co-pay that these employees have to pay. This year, the insurance committee is looking at maybe trying to help with that in some fashion, we increased some things, okay? The, so we can't rule out that we haven't got other costs elsewhere. Now coming to Ms. Ashley, uh, she, uh, she does a lot. I'm not gonna take nothing away from nobody on that, but I'll tell you all this right now, I've been trying to hire her since he took office. Okay? And we'd love to hire her. Uh, so don't think that the, and what I wanna do to prove by that is, when I first went in business, a man from Dupont helped me with my business profile and stuff. He said, Norman, where are you gonna get employees from? I said, what do you mean? He said, what competitive business are you gonna go to and hire employees away from? I said, man, I'll never be there. Well, guess what I'm doing? Every restaurant, every building I go into, I'm looking for employees nowadays to hire away from you. Okay? So that is our business market, because we don't have people outside this building, so to speak, as a workforce that's doing very good. Everybody's on the road by average. Okay? I can't hire anybody. I'll hire six people right now if they come to work, including Ashley. But Chair, I would like to make an amendment to this resolution. I would like for my name to be added as a sponsor place.
Did I talk to Roseanne?
Oh. Just before I go to you too, if anybody wants to say anything for these things, anybody? If not, Ms. Roseanne.
Wait, we have to second his amendment.
Well, it's time before we even go any further, don't we?
No. He made...
I was gonna...
He wanted to amend and I'll second your amendment.
Motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
His name be added to the...
I'll second it.
So, I second it. No shit. All in favor? Aye. Aye, aye, some no's. Now, anybody, Roseanne, you still heard her speak? I'm gonna go back, when I, I don't hear anybody speak, I have to spot, but I'm gonna back for one time.
Anybody else wants to get that off, sit down?
Well, no, yeah, I'd like to say no. Um, I, I agree with what all you, you're saying, you know, about the other county employees. Um, and it's, it's unfortunate, you know, that we had to cut the, uh, the insurance out, you know? But, um, you know, I can remember back, the county commissioners kinda come and go. Um, and the new ones don't know the history behind, um, resolutions and decisions that we make. And I, I can remember when Karen was here, uh, when I was commissioner on my first term. And she had been here so long that she had, could remember so many details. And that was, that's so helpful for us commissioners that, that have not been here that long. Um, and so that's another reason why I feel like, how long has Ashley been here?
Six and a half.
Six years.
Six and a half years, you know? So, um, you know, she, that's another thing that we would lose, um, is the continuity of information. You know, if we had to hire someone else, we would, uh, we would have to really depend on our, our own news about situations. And so I know during this budget, this last budget process, uh, we had to depend on Ashley's knowledge of situations in the past years. You know, I still call Karen.
All right, I'm gonna go about this here, just go ahead, Ms. Roseanne.
Uh, now that you mention Ms. Lynch, she worked here forty-two years, she worked under six county mayors. And she did the same job basically that Ashley does, and I doubt she ever made thirty thousand dollars. But, um, another thing that I wanted to say was, during the last four years, during my first term as county commissioner, and I'm gonna say this, I hope it doesn't make anybody mad at me. I can name probably four of you commissioners right now that would vote no. If you, if we had a resolution before us to raise one person's pay twelve thousand dollars, I can, I can figure out, you would vote no, and you would've been livid by it. But anyway, um, back to up to things Brett said. You know, your office, it is a good office, I'm not saying that you don't have a good office. We have other offices that don't have audit findings either. That speaks for them. They have good employees, they also have excellent employees. They also have, um, employees that have duties delegated to them, sometimes more than one, like, um, Wanda said. Another one in her boy, in her office probably has three, big duties delegated out to her, and she's been there twenty-five, twenty-six years. But, um, something else, when we were talking about the sheriff's raises, do y'all remember how many times it was brought up? Why are you doing this in the middle of a budget year? Why don't you do this during the budget process? That was brought up so many times. So now that's something we might consider, waiting until the, the new budget comes in. And then maybe we can include some of the other employees in that budget for the next year for decent raise.
And I just wanna say that since this budget year started, she's had over three interviews. Every interview paying her over fifty thousand dollars. And when we compared the sheriff's salaries, we compared them to neighboring counties. We already said that, uh, Henry County's in the fifties, and, uh, Carroll County pays more. So we're still getting a good deal, and I believe we need to establish a position, because if something happened to Ashley tomorrow when she was gone, I'm not hiring an executive assistant, I'm hiring a budget administrator. So I'm gonna go after someone with the financial knowledge first, and then they can learn the executive assistant subsidiary to that. Whereas we haven't had that component in our county government. We need a, we need a stable position. We've already talked about, we're not ready to adopt a centralized purchasing, you know, and accounting system. But so we have to figure out what that happy medium is. And a happy medium is someone qualified, it's the most, I'm telling you, we've got all these departments. The budget is the most important component of county government operations in the course of a year. Okay? Plain and simple, that's, that's just the truth. If that budget is not managed effectively, it affects all county employees, it affects all departments. So she's in a critical position, I would like to keep her, and I said, I prefaced my comments, that this is a competitive raise. You know, this is to keep someone within the confines of working for the county. I believe we've got a true asset in, in her abilities to be able to manage the budget, and, and I can't speak for Ms. Lynch, cause I did not work for Ms. Lynch. But I'm going to speculate that our audit findings were probably more frequent under her purview. And since Ashley has taken over the budget, our audit findings have continually gone down every year. Our accuracy within our budget is getting better, and I think, you know, Commissioner President, you, you have parked on that about over the years and given the history of being off. A budget is an estimate, of course, but it is getting better, our process is getting better, and I just feel like, again, I made in my case as a county mayor, as the chief financial officer managing the finances of the county, I believe we need a component in place, a position in place that is financial focus as opposed to administrative focus. And, and this is the first step in getting us there. All right.
I have one last comment?
I believe everybody done heard enough, I think it's time to...
I just have one comment, one comment, now you'll...
Okay.
Um, you talked about the other counties, um, what they pay. Well, if you take the other counties and you go into the county clerk's office, the registered deeds office, any of the other county offices, you're gonna find, if those counties are any size, um, at all, some of those employees make fun of it than these employees did here. So if you wanna compare, then these, these department heads need to compare what other counties pay their employees also. I yield the floor.
And I've been the one champion in the budget, in the budget meeting. If you've gone to the budget meeting, you know that I've been the one person out there saying, we're getting there, people. We're getting ready to face the whole, the hard facts of having salary adjustments across the board for all county employees. This is opening the door. I'm more than, I'm more than happy for the county clerk's office to come and make their case, because I know that there's value over there. We need to begin moving in that direction, and so this is the start. I've made my case for my office, and I encouraged all the other, uh, county officials to begin gathering the data, gathering the competitive data, and let's present it, uh, going forward. But right now, Ms., Ms. Travis has multiple offers on the board. That being said, I'm gonna go, go roll call vote.
Can I make a motion?
Aye, aye.
Please? I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this and do this during the budget process, so that we can include the other offices in some raises.
Do I have a second?
Right, I want to order. Can, can you make a motion before you voted on something that had a, that's been presented and seconded?
I believe it's been done in...
Well, that definitely is an amendment. Then I make an amendment to this resolution that we cut this off.
I make a motion for...
Taking either people or...
That's gotta be voted on, vote the passes.
Yeah, gotta be voted on.
Gotta be voted, does anybody second? Does anybody second?
Nobody seconded.
Well, now it's a roll call vote.
Chair, chairman of the voting for the resolution itself?
Yes, sir. As the moment president had to, had to. So without this is a roll call vote, you're voting yes to get the raise, no would be no. Yes. With the Norman's name, it's on that chapter.
Voting for the raise?
Yes, voting for Ms. Ashley.
Carol Lee?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hunt?
Martin.
Addison. Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Fredson?
Yes.
Leah Dye?
Pass.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Bird?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Jill Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Peetton?
Aye.
Roseanne Ward?
Pass.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Thirteen, thirteen yes, three pass.
Motion period.
Uh, women, women, I would like to make a motion that all of these resolutions...
Change the date.
Change the date to the nineteenth autumn, so we don't have to do that for each individual one.
Thank you.
From the sixteenth to the ninth.
From the sixteenth to the ninth.
Changing the date on your letterhead from the sixteenth to the nineteenth, we, we had to postpone a meeting, so I need a motion, she's made a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Have a second, Director Hicks. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Aces? No? All right. Nine out of thirteen. Resolution budgeting funds in the amount of one hundred and twenty dollars within your senior citizen's budget. Motion, motion?
Second.
Aye.
Second of Ms. Powers? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? No? Aces? Nine out of fourteen. Resolution budgeting reimbursement funds in the amount of four hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents within the highway department, department budget. That's just a bridge, a big cent.
Motion.
That's a motion?
Captain.
Second? Patton?
Put it first.
I think that's pretty bridge, dude.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was having no no's. Aces? Nine out of fifteen.
Line item fifteen, resolution budgeting contribution funds in amount of five thousand five hundred for both E nine-one-one and waste management to pay for Benton County weather alerts and code red. Is it a motion?
Motion.
Motion carries, second for Mr. Kenna, any discussion on that matter?
I have a few things.
Okay.
All right, um, this is new money, if I'm correct on it, and have waste management paid their twenty-five hundred dollars yet. They have, okay, that's all I needed.
And they sent their, and that's why I say, we received the money in specifically for code red, so we're just simply turning that money back around and paying it back.
Okay, this code red, is it the one that's supposed to do our phones if there is emergency? Why didn't he go off lending, if he were?
It did, it went off.
Did he? I didn't.
Well, you checked your phone, but it did go off.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, no, no, ayes. Line item sixteen, resolution appropriating funds from the airport fund, one eighty-nine unassigned fund balance in the amount of eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars in order to pay for the airport grant matching share.
Motion.
Have a motion, Ms. Dana, second, or Mr. Kenna, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so this is a grant that they are getting back, how much of it, is it a match grant? Are we gonna get back, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars?
I think we're just dispersing it, or we're not.
Now, this is a ninety-five-five grant.
So, we're gonna?
And we have got about, roughly, four hundred thousand dollars in airport grants that's ready to roll as soon as we pull them, but as soon as we utilize those grants, we have to then make, make our match.
Make our, yeah.
So, you kinda don't know the timing of those, and that's why this is coming.
Okay, this is new money.
Yes.
And how come they didn't say that in the budget?
Well.
That it was a possibility.
Um, I guess I'll, I'll find out, I don't know, it's a, it's an A two-H project, and, uh, as they finish them. You know, well, I guess we can say when we get those grants, we kind of commit that we will make our match.
Right, but we, we, we voted as commission, anybody can go for a hundred percent grant, but anything else, they were to come to commission to state that they are getting, they are applying for a grant, because it recounts the county money, and that's why I'm asking.
And this probably rolled up in that grant that we got about a year ago, September, October.
But then the commission should know about it.
Well, we did owe the, one hundred and twelve, I think it was one hundred and twelve thousand at that time, and this is to make up that balance for that.
He said, I had part of this as him last year, I was there for it, asking for a grant, probably during that time, it was probably, no one understood. He said, shut it up, Tim, I'll give you that, show that information. Nothing, no further, just wanted to use the roll call vote, please.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Leah Dieh?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Peetton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Clan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Line item seventeen, resolution appropriating funds in amount of six thousand from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order for the civil service board to be able to purchase testing material for job applicants, propose to sheriff department, hold a jail.
Motion.
Have a motion, Ms. Dana, and then Mr. Patton, any discussion?
Yes, I have questions.
Say again.
I have questions, please. This is new money, and they are wanting testing material for six thousand dollars, what did they be testing for this?
Well, we haven't really had the civil service. We discussed this in law enforcement, and this test is, now, they have just one test for everybody. If you hire in as a secretary, or you hire in as a jailer, or you hire in as a deputy, it's just one test. And it doesn't cover everything at that specific, specific position. Um, and these tests will be more job specific, they'll have one for the deputies, they'll have one for, like, a secretary or a clerical worker or something like that, this is, that way they don't have just one range test, they've got several different ones, they got you.
So, this is paper test?
Yes.
Okay, six thousand dollars for paper?
They are certified tests.
Okay.
Anything further, discussion, if not?
And it's, this was passed by law enforcement and legislature.
Just wanted to give the roll call, please.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Leah Dieh?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Peetton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Clan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Line item eighteen, resolution appropriating funds in amount of sixty-six thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars, sixteen cents from the unassigned fund balance within the county, county general fund in order to bid County clerk and master to cover all of the different tax parcels in the county.
Motion.
I have a motion.
Fraser.
Ms. Fraser?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hicks, any discussion?
This is new money.
I, I really don't understand why we're paying that six thousand, not sixty-six thousand dollars. What's that for? What?
That's resolution. Now.
That's a back taxes, we have to pay the taxes.
I think the mayor explained that he's nothing better than I would say.
And what this is, is kind of a clerical entry to clear the books of back taxes. These are all the properties that did not sell through a tax, through the clerk and masters tax. So, uh, I believe we raised a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars in, uh, properties for back taxes, and these were the ones that did not sell, but in order to clear them off the roads of the court and bring them onto the rolls of county ownership, we basically have to pay the back taxes due. And so, we'll make that payment, we're basically paying ourselves. And so, this is an administrative entry to basically bring everything down to zero, bring these properties into our possession, of which, as you saw earlier in the year when we had that large parcel sale, we'll do the same thing with all the parcels that come into our, uh, I guess you'd say, ownership. And we'll either do this again in August, or we'll wait till the opportune time, but this is part of that process of clearing it off.
Any further?
We've got to pay the shell to taxes, although you didn't.
Right, so we're just paying the trustee, you know, paying him, the clerk's office, he'll zero out, take the check over to the trustee's office or deposit, so in a way, it's still, uh, cycled back around. Recommended by property.
Recommended by property. The roll call vote.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Leah Dieh?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Peetton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Clan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Line item nineteen, resolution appropriating funds in amount of two hundred and twenty dollars, ninety-three cents from the assigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to pay the court hearing imperative, rest care service needed on a court case during the month, November.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Dana?
Second.
Second, for Mr. Patton, any discussion?
It is new money.
It's new money, roll call.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Leah Dieh?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Peetton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Clan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Line item twenty, resolution appropriating funds in amount of sixteen thousand, seventy-three dollars, or seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-two cents from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to pay the back group fee for the revenue visited collective. Is it a motion?
Motion.
Second, Dana, second, or Kenna, discussion?
This is new money.
No discussion?
We'll be getting this money back the following year, correct?
Well, not only are we getting recurring money back, but we also collecting back, uh, back revenue, so, in a way, I don't know, disparage well, and her process, so, I think to date, she's, uh, been successful in collecting a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for county, uh, that we didn't have. And out of that hundred, uh, and fifty plus, uh, there's like forty-two of it that is a recurring annual that will keep coming back to us every year. And she's still working on future projects, so I think the picture's gonna keep getting better and better. She'll be here tomorrow, I have about a two-hour meeting with her tomorrow, I'm gonna ask her to summarize that meeting, and then once she summarizes that, I'll send it out to all the commissioners, we all.
Nothing further, roll call vote.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Leah Dieh?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Peetton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Clan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Line item twenty-one, resolution appropriating funds in amount of seven thousand, thirty dollars from the jail workhouse or courthouse location tax reserve account in order to purchase the two, the jail for new tankless water heaters.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Dana?
Second.
Second, or Sunny Hall? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It was brought up in law enforcement by Mr. Vickers, that, uh, he brought it up, and we all agreed with, that they would ask for a quote from Killers and Dixon, just to see what they had to say, and, uh, Sheriff's Department said they would do that, and get back with us tonight, and I would just like to ask them to find out.
For sure.
The figures here, the figures that we brought forth, forward, uh, at the last meeting, was for the two hot water heaters, seven thousand and thirty dollars, and, uh, the quote from Killers was nine thousand two hundred. So, we had the best price on the table whenever we started.
Great, now, say some lunch. No other discussions? If not, roll call.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Leah Dieh?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Peetton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Clan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Line item twenty-two, point in the number, I have, uh, Madeline Danielle Breeden, and I ain't making any, go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go back to your motion.
Motion.
I thought I said, I'm on, I'm on second, second, please, okay. Go back to your, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, no. Line item twenty-three, any other business?
I have a question.
Yes.
Chairman, I want to talk about a subject, it's the, uh, bond issue being put on a referendum about. Now, I'm, I'm pretty sure that you and the mayor, we're gonna be at odds against this, and I'm trying to pick a fight on that, and we all don't have a long room to space for everybody. I do have a resolution, I have, I'm the sponsor on it, if I can't get one of y'all to sponsor it with me, I'm just gonna be dead in a track, but I'll pass, uh, copy out to the mayor and the chairman. I'm gonna take this again, will everybody? I, I bring this subject up, I don't want that to reflect that I was for the bond resolution or I was against the bond resolution. Had I been here, here in twenty-one, nineteen, at the, uh, six million dollar bond general obligation public improvement bond, I would have supported that under normal circumstances, if it had been put in the agenda. Voting for it under any other business, I couldn't have done that, I remind everybody, I wasn't here, I was about four hours away working in East Tennessee. I like the subjects, I like the construction projects that we've heard the mayor talk about. I feel, regardless if I'm for the ballot or for the petition against the petition, I support the citizens that work on the petition. I'm gonna read one paragraph out of this for everybody. Whereas citizens within twenty days from publication of resolution number two zero one nine one zero two one dash sixteen in the Camden Chronicle, they did execute a petition signed by at least ten percent of the registered voters in that county. And legally filed said petition with the county court clerk in Benton County in a timely manner. The petition was in protest to the above mentioned bond issue. The citizens of Benton County request a question of the bond issue to be put on the next election ballot or vote, and the next election is in March. I don't wanna argue with this, anybody, I'm gonna get up and say what I've got to say about it. I think that those people behind this petition earned this referendum that's being talked about. And, uh, I beg one of y'all for this to come up and be voted on, I need somebody to sponsor it. If nobody wants to sponsor it, I'm certainly not gonna be mad, there's not gonna be any party feelings, but I think, I think this is the right thing to do. I'm gonna give a vote.
My, I'd like to say more things, right now, my question is, is you, I'm concerned about the March, when it gets out, but I've also found out that it's been inquired by, uh, by an attorney looking at it, and they're not giving us our opinion. They don't know if it's even a true fact, they take it done what they're doing, but I know that, so I'm, I'm gonna ask you to, I'd like to prefer to next March, let it come up, because we don't really know where we're at right now. We, they don't know whether it's legitimate, so we'd be, even if we do that, we'd be acting of not knowing, I mean, we left the petition granted to us. So, we don't, we've not got a legal term, and they didn't thank us, on, on the claim toward it not being appropriate of being done right now, I don't know that. But he's gonna get back with us, well, not, not after the holiday, he's on vacation.
Chairman, your, your arguments, uh, very good argument, you'll have to convince this commission, I'm not gonna retract or hold the resolution back. If we postpone it for another month, then there's no way of it being on the March ballot, it kills opportunity for it to be on the March ballot. I'm not gonna argue with you, you've got a very convincing story. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, let these seventeen people in here decide.
Would I, would I? Yes.
I'll go swat.
Okay.
I was told that we need to vote, to vote on this and this story, because if not, it would be too late. And the mayor has an attorney sitting over there, do you know the answer to this? Was this legit? Have you checked? What's the question? There's, there's different questions. Was the petition, is the petition legit? I don't know the answer to that question right now. That's an issue that just came up, and actually somebody with state looking at it, and I have to look at it too. The first question worried about whether or not this committee must put it in a resolution within a certain timeframe, and that answer is no. And my authority was backed up by the state, and Mr. Gobert is the coordinator of the elections, uh, commission in Nashville. So this, this, the first question is whether or not you all were required to put it on the very next meeting or not, and that answer is clearly no.
The next meeting, but not the next ballot.
Or, or the next ballot. You could put it on, there is no mandate to put it on in a certain timeframe for this commission to set for the election.
The project can't go till this, till we resolve, but we can always assume legally it'll be done what it's been done. So we don't know till all that is done.
That's not completely accurate, Chair. We still have other, other funding mechanisms besides bonds.
That's true, I'm talking about the way.
The project's not stopped.
You could drop two or three off and be a different thing.
But that, that, that's correct also, that way of saying, I mean, if you're asking me, 'cause there's, there's a few different questions here, it's not just one question and two questions, there's probably about five or six different questions that are in play here right now. But the issue that, uh, who the Fraser talked about is, the petition itself just really deals with one mechanism of doing the funding. It doesn't stop the commission from actually using another form of, of funding and just going forward without it being stopped. But the potential in that scenario is, the way that, the, the bond issuance was probably the most efficient and economical, where it actually saved more money, uh, in the long run. And there's some cash flow issues and things like that that were coming into play with the budget and things like that, but, uh, like you said, there's about five or six different issues in play here. Initially, I would only ask for one or two of those, these are more issues that are coming up. And I'm not the type of county attorney for you all to sit there and just give you an answer off the, uh, off my sleeve without even doing the research. I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna know the answer, and this is actually what that would more of just me as well, to make sure, because it is a big issue. Ten seconds.
Yes. Mr. President, I'm all for putting this on the ballot. Uh, the question is gonna be more, I believe March is way too soon. Uh, I believe there needs to be clarification to the public, I think the public deserves the proper vetting time to be able to educate themselves. Uh, according to people who signed the petition, people that have come to me, uh, were told their taxes are gonna go up, that's an outright blatant lie. Uh, they were told that I was going to get a three-hundred-thousand-dollar commission, uh, if we broke that bond. First of all, that's illegal, I should be thrown under the jail if that happened, uh, but that is an outright lie, an inaccurate lie, purposely spread, as, as well as, uh, there are people who are involved with this particular, uh, petition that wasn't truthful to the public, and so I'm gonna read the sentence for you on that. So, so I don't believe we can properly educate ten thousand registered voters in Benton County between now and March, because it took us thirteen or fourteen months to educate eighteen county commissioners, who is the way the process is supposed to happen. For y'all, your, your constituents empowered you to be the subject matter experts, to learn what's to vote on before you vote. So if you think that if it's difficult enough for eighteen commissioners, how do you think, how difficult do you think it's gonna be for ten thousand registered voters? So I'm making the recommendation that we put this on the August ballot, so that we have the proper public vetting time to be able to tell the people the truth, to be able to show them the parameters of exactly what this bond, this bond from day one said up to six million. And we asked our financial advisor, why, because it originally went eight million? And he said that you have to be able to guarantee the market, that you can cover the, the cost. We knew the monies that we were gonna get in the, the back end to pay that bond down, we were never gonna exceed five million, and my personal goal was to keep it around three and a half million, which I believe at the end of the day, when you look at the conditions of our properties, the cost that it would, the cost that it would be to us just to keep the properties that we currently have in our inventory, and to continually repair them and fix them, that this particular project was well worth the money. We spent fourteen months on this particular project. We did things the right way, we did things the efficient way. But at the end of the day, I'm very much looking forward to the public debate on this, and taking this issue to the public, but we cannot do that by March. It has to be voted on today to be put on the March ballot, and I just believe that is not wise, uh, I think it's inefficient, and plus, we're still trying to get clarification to this particular petition. So let me just read you this petition. "We, the undersigned registered voters in Benton County, Tennessee, protest the issuance of the general obligation bonds as proposed by resolution two-thousand-nineteen-ten-twenty-one-dash-sixteen adopted by the Benton County legislative body on ten-twenty-one-nineteen." That is a preamble statement, okay, that is framing the intent of the petition. It's simply saying, hey, we saw something happen, and we're going to do this. And what this means is, the very last sentence of this petition, "We desire that general obligation bonds not be issued unless the voters of Benton County approve such act in a referendum." That is the qualifying statement, not the resolution, not the date, not, not the preface, but the last sentence of that petition is the qualifying statement in that petition. In that particular line, it should've said, "We desire that resolution number two-thousand-nineteen-ten-twenty-one-dash-sixteen be put up for a public vote." It did not say that. If we proceed with this particular petition the way it is written, that is going to impact all general obligation bonds issued in the future. Now, I know the schools, this is a, this is an important issue to the schools, we have a jail that we've got funded, all of those are funded by general obligation bonds. For a resolution saying up to six million, of which at the end of the day, again, I'm being forthright saying it probably will cost us three and a half million. If you think the voters are panicking over up to six million, wait till they're presenting a general obligation bond several years from now that says up to twenty million, they're gonna have a heart attack. And it's gonna be difficult to get a seventy-five-year-old retiree with no kids at school, that maybe didn't even graduate Benton County schools, you think they're gonna vote for, for a future bond issuance for the schools? So I believe there is a lot of liability to the way this petition was issued, and that's why I say we get our ducks in a row and get the proper clarifications before we proceed any further on this particular bond, and I think we need that public argument to take place at August as opposed to March. So that's just, you know, we kind of discuss it, I just believe March is, like I said, the people are gonna be even more confused once we get out on the, on, on the trail of, of trying to inform them of exactly what bonds and notes and all those different financing mechanisms are. I just would respectfully ask you to withdraw your, your motion, and let's put this off for the proper discussion, frame it properly, let's put it on the August.
Chairman, your points well taken, um, I'm not gonna withdraw anything, I've got a second, Chairman.
We're gonna have to change the rules of order, don't we?
Okay.
We're gonna have to make a new rule.
No, I'm not gonna, well, you remind me how to change the rule of order.
I admit to you, while we're just starting, we've been doing all this, we need to amend the rule of order to produce this tonight. You kinda like it, do you, if we're done on here?
But actually, Chairman, if you would, if we please would, uh?
I made the motion to amend the rule of order.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Now we have to have a second.
You make the motion, change it. You don't get to make the motion to change the rule of order.
Second, Chairman. Are you changing or suspending the rules of order?
I'm ending.
We're suspending, there's a difference.
Yep. I, I, I tried to suspend.
Suspend the rule of order.
Suspend the rule of order.
So, Ms. Dana, Mr. Rock. Take a second. Take a roll call vote to change the rules of order.
Suspend.
Suspend, I mean. I don't, put it out up there, let's go.
Daryl Higgs.
Yes.
Ronnie Hawker.
Your vote is to amend the rules of order, so let this application come out and be heard and be voted on.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Don Patton.
No.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Leah Dieh.
Yes.
Norman Fraser.
No.
Gary Fur.
No.
Sunny Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill.
No.
Janet Dixon.
No.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Ward Plan.
No.
Anyone wish to change your vote?
I just ain't saying that if we not vote no, I'm not going against the attorneys in the debates.
We have eight yes, two pass, and six no.
Motion carries.
Right.
Chairman, I'd just like to thank you and everybody.
I need some, um, yeah. I held this conversation, right now, that's what we need to talk about.
No.
Yes, for kids.
We're still on any other business, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I got something I'd like to say.
Come on out.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to commend you in that, your ideas on the bond, because the main one that was against you doing this bond is doing the same thing, so it must've been a pretty good idea. And that's all I have to say.
Anybody got anything further? Yes, Mr. Dana.
I would say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, 'cause I'm not gonna say anything until next year.
Oh, I'd like to speak, so I go ahead.
And, uh, y'all heard me talk about, you know, I'm a, I'm a stickler for the historical record, and so I, I like to do these proclamations for the historical record, uh, and if you will, if you read Camden Chronicle, uh, today, uh, or yet, uh, yesterday or today, you saw where we recognized some volunteers within our community for the service that they have done, and the Ag Extension Program was facilitator of that volunteer ward, and, and I know as, as employees, business owners, government, military, uh, sports teams, you always say you're only as good as your people. And so these volunteers, I believe, uh, deserve to be recognized on the historical record, and therefore, this is why we issued this proclamation last week, I put a copy under there, but again, I know there's people on Facebook, and again, the minutes are being taken, so I would like to read this proclamation. Proclamation, Benton County Office of the Mayor, proclamation from the office of the county mayor to honor and recognize those citizens who serve our county and sacrifice their personal time, efforts, and well-being to bettering the welfare of all Benton County citizens, who proclaim our appreciation and gratitude to these individuals for the fall. Whereas the entire citizenry of the county of Benton can inspire people to take action and improve our quality of life. And whereas volunteers can connect with the citizens of Benton County through several local community service organizations. And whereas individuals, organizations, and communities are the center of social and economic change, discover their power to make a difference. And whereas, on this day, we recognize volunteers in our community for their commitment and service to others. And whereas the giving of oneself and service to another empowers the giver and recipient alike. And whereas experience teaches us that government cannot solve our nation's social problems solely on its own actions. And whereas recent assessments indicate that for each hour of volunteer time invested, returns an estimated twenty-five dollars and forty-three cents per hour to the people of Tennessee. And whereas, volunteers are vital to our future as caring and productive nation, state, county, and its community. Now therefore, I, Brett Blackley, Mayor of Benton County, and on behalf of the entire county commission, do hereby proclaim December thirteenth as Benton County Volunteer Recognition Day, and recognize the following Benton County volunteers for their commitment to our community. The youth volunteers were Amber Collins, Cameron Ballard, and Mercedes Wright. The adult volunteers were Cory Walker, Joey Cooper, Jennifer Lowery, Susan Woods, and Timothy Mark Walker. I'll inject that Miss Amber Collins and Mr. Cory Walker were chosen to go on to the state, uh, level of the Governor's Volunteer Appreciation banquet that will be held in February. So we encourage all citizens of Benton County to participate in volunteerism in Benton County